The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Orion. Nineteen present.
Qua on being present, we will be led today in prayer by our very own John Watson Jr. of Maple Temple, who has been the resident pastor for the Board of Alderman.
We have so many members standing with us in prayer. We want to first have a moment of silence for Mary Ann Ponders. Her mother passed. Her name was Mary Jo. So we want a moment of silence for her, those that may remember. Let us pray. Gracious God, heavenly Father, we first thank you for this privilege of coming before you, making our petitions known in prayer. For you revealed in your word that rule and authority in government that serve the people is in keeping with divine order. Therefore, we come to you placing in your hands the needs of our city, asking you to give wisdom, ability, fair judgment to those who govern us. We know, Lord, the task is difficult and the duties are many, and the responsibility is heavy. We're praying for our city officials as they break for this session that you would follow them home and allow them to experience peace with their families. Then refresh their hearts and their minds that when they return, they will be able to better serve the people. We ask these blessings in Jesus' name.
Let's give Reverend John Watson Jr. a big round of applause and thank him for being here on Friday, of course. I really appreciate him coming here nearly every Friday and volunteering his time so that we start the board off right and under a good, sound prayer. As he mentioned during the prayer, Mary Ellen Ponders' mother passed away, so please, you know, keep the entire family in your prayers. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. I have the esteemed pleasure of offering to this board my special guest, Darielle Davis, who is my grandbaby.
Welcome to the board. When I walked past her this morning, she said, "You look just like my Papa."
I'm tired of hearing that, by the way.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to introduce my special guest this morning, my granddaughter Natalie, who's here to help me vote today to make sure I vote the right way. I'd also like to recognize Jeff Hines from the Carpenters Union, Mr. Cersei up there, and Josh Grunberger from St. Louis Fire Department EMS.
All right. Welcome to the board, Natalie. You're following your grandfather's footsteps. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th would like to wrap us up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. Today is July 12th. It was on this day in 1982 that E.T. set all the box office records as the biggest movie around. But more importantly, this is Bald is In Day, so I think we'd all salute Mari's today. It's Bald is In Day.
Alderman from the 22nd.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes for July 3rd, 2019.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th and 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify with a sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Park Pacific Community Improvement District. The appointment of Ms. Jill Engel, a property owner in the district whose term will expire on June 30th, 2021. The reappointment of Mr. Stephen Smith, a property owner in the district whose term will expire June 30th, 2023. The reappointment of Mr. Paul Dorner, a property owner in the district whose term will expire on June 30th, 2021. The reappointment of Mrs. Laura Conrad, a property owner in the district whose term will expire June 30th, 2023. The reappointment of Mr. David Olameyer, a property owner in the district whose term will expire June 30th, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment, sincerely, Lyda Krucen, Mayor.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize Alderman's appointment to the Park Pacific Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointments to the Park Pacific Sid.
Moved by Alderman from 7th, entending a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion? All in favor signify with a sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Locust Central Special Business District. The reappointment of Ms. Jennifer Prushner, a property owner in the district whose term will expire on December 31st, 2021. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment, sincerely, Lyda Krucen, Mayor.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize Alderman's appointment to the Locust Central Special Business District.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alderman from the 7th, entending a second on that motion.
How about a second? You second that?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman from the 27th. Any discussion? All in favor signify with a sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of report of city officials.
We dispense with line item 7. Would anyone like to take any board, any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line items 8 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 89, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with amendments and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and an emergency clause. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on July 2nd, 2019, to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from dual zoning of D, Multiple Family Dwelling District, and G, Local Commercial and Office District, to D, Multiple Family Dwelling District on the newly plated Lot B, the parcel that abuts the existing alley, and the H area Commercial District on the newly plated Lot A, the parcel that will abut both Guyer and Menorah in City Blocks 396 so as to include the described parcel of land in City Block 396 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at the intersection of January and the Lozen, regulating all traffic traveling northbound and southbound on January at the Lozen, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on the Lozen at January and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 92, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance establishing a three-way stop site at the intersection of the Lozen and Sulfur, regulating all traffic traveling northbound on Sulfur at the Lozen, and regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on the Lozen at Sulfur and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 93, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance directing the City of St. Louis to apply for grant monies available to airport sponsors under Title 49 U.S. Code 47134 for pre-development planning costs related to the preparation of application or proposed application for the privatization of a public airport pursuant to the FFA Airport Investment Partnership Program and to direct any monies resulting to the city from seeing applications to obtaining and paying for services of professional consultants and access to knowledge, resource to inform and advise the Board of Alderman regarding the airport investment partnership program and the city's effort related thereto. Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed and Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance setting forth regulations for the use of surveillance technology by the city, requiring surveillance technology usage rules, regulations, and guidelines to be established and approved by the Board of Alderman before any such surveillance technology may be used and plans may be put in practice and containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 89 and 94. To the HUD's Committee, Board Bill 90. To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 91 and 92. To Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 93. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of the Legislation Committee. Board Bill 78, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance adopted pursuant to Section 105.483 revised statutes of Missouri reaffirming the provisions of Ordinance 62391, 66691, 67617, 68409, 68934, and 70622, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2019 St. Louis Works and 50/50 Sidewalk Program citywide appropriating $5.3 million from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of the work, approval plan, specifications, work, and material guarantees, estimated costs from city funds and supplemental agreements, and reversion authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provision, and the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading of board bills.
We dispense with line items. Alderman from the 22nd.
President and members of the board, I'd like to move to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 78 as amended and Board Bill 75 on a perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 78 as amended and 75 to the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. 23 aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion of Alderman from the 22nd, and suspend the rules for the purposes of moving aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 78 as perfection consent calendar. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 78 as amended and 75 on the perfection consent calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the 23rd.
Mr. President, I assume this is the appropriate time. Last week, we ended up with a tie vote on Board Bill 81, the curfew bill that was introduced by Alderman Bosley. Have voting on the prevailing side, I would like to reconsider Board Bill 81.
Having voted on the prevailing side of Board Bill 81, which failed last week, you're moving to reconsider the previous vote.
I'd like to reconsider the vote, yes.
All right. It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, seconded by Alderman from the 3rd to reconsider the previous vote. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. Alderman, I'm sorry, President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderwoman Howard. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. 12 aye votes and 11 no votes.
By your vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 23rd. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 80 on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
We dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 78, as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance adopted pursuant to Section 105.483 revised statute of Missouri reaffirming the provisions of Ordinance 62391, 66691, 67617, 68409, 68934, 70622, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
I gotta finish. I'm sorry.
Mr. President, can we reread the perfection consent bills again, please?
Madam Clerk, please read Board Bill 78 as amended and 75 on the perfection consent calendar.
An ordinance, Board Bill 78 as amended, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Vacoro, an ordinance adopted pursuant to Section 105.483 revised statutes of Missouri reaffirming the provisions of Ordinance 62391, 66691, 67617, 68409, 68934, 70622, establishing a policy for the disclosure of potential conflicts of interest and substantial interest for certain municipal officials and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 75, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the 2019 St. Louis Works and the 50/50 Sidewalk Program citywide appropriating $5.3 million from the Street Improvement Fund, containing sections for description of work, approval of plan, specification of work, and material guarantees, established cost from city funds, and supplemental agreements, and reversion authorizations, applicable state and federal wage rate requirements, equal opportunity provisions, the mayor's executive orders, contract advertising statutes, and a public work emergency clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? All in favor signify with a sign aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. On the vote to reconsider. On the motion to reconsider, fortunately, the clerk said the number's backwards. The vote failed because there were only 11 for and 12 against, so the vote failed, so Perfection consent. Board bills for perfection.
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 48, 58, 76, 80 as amended, 56, 57, 60, 82, 83, 67, 71, 68, 54, 61, 70, 55, 66, and 72.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move for adoption of third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman, I'm sorry, Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. 25 aye votes.
By vote, stay in the motion, Alderman from the 22nd, third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills.
That is the extent of third reading consent calendar.
Third reading, report of engrossance.
Board Bill 79, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingraccia, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement pertaining to the location of a corporate headquarters establishing an earnings and payroll tax reimbursement account in support of the project described herein, approving a development and performance agreement related to such project and authorizing execution thereof, and authorizing certain other actions by city officials.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on third reading, finally passing of Board Bill 79 as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 79 as amended.
By Alderman from the 6th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th, and Alderman from the 27th. Please proceed, Alderman.
I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 79 as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingraccia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. notes including increasing the not to exceed principal amount of previously issued RPA 5 Tax Increment Notes St. Louis Innovative District RPA 5 Project Series B from the original aggregated principal amount $2 million and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the third reading, final passage of Board Bill 59 Committee Substitute.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move for third reading, final passage.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, seconded by Alderman from the 10th. Alderman from the 17th, please proceed.
Mr. President, members of the board, last week when this came up, it was very late in the day and I didn't want to make any comments on it and prolong the meeting, but I thought it was kind of appropriate to just spend a couple minutes, I think it's an important project for the city, and wanted to elaborate. I had had a pass out last week for it, I think they're trying to pass out some of it now, but I just wanted to spend a couple minutes to talk about this project. In the HUDs Committee, this is a, this will, this is a TIF, a piece of TIF legislation that will enable the next building to be built in Cortex. And the next building is, I think, an exciting one. It's going to be over 300,000 square feet, and it'll be, I think, really pushing the design from a standpoint of, you know, what we've seen historically as far as office buildings here in the city. So I think it's kind of a milestone in a number of ways. On the HUDs Committee, we have adopted a mission statement that is, that the focus of our committee, we are HUDs, Housing Urban Development, and with that in mind, our mission statement is, is that we work to improve the economic viability of the city. In other words, that we have money to do all the things that we're expected to do, but also the economic well-being of our residents. And I think that this project is a good example of, of what, of how we interpret that and how that can actually be implemented. The significance of Cortex is very important for our city. It's probably the largest activated TIF, or certainly we've activated more of the TIF capacity than we have for that project than we have for anything else in the city. And last week I had passed it out, I guess they cleared off the desk so they're not here, but they're making some copies. I just wanted to kind of give you a bit of an update. The original plan for Cortex planned on 4 million square feet of office space, that's a fairly significant amount, that they are almost halfway there with this project that will bring them up to 1.95 million square feet. They estimate that the total project construction cost would be $2.3 billion. They're at $675 million at this point. They have 12,000 jobs was the goal. This project, actually, as we stand here, probably by the end of the year, will be at above 6,000 people working in Cortex. The annual payroll that we wanted to have initially was 700 million, we're at 450 million. And we had hoped to have 600 companies in Cortex, and we now have over 400 companies in Cortex as I speak. So we are kind of a little report card on the metrics. A lot of people have asked, well, what about, you know, the economic viability of the city? We frequently get criticized for our use of TIF, and I think a lot of it is somewhat misinformed. There is a table that is being passed around that I think gives a really good summary of what happens with a TIF if it's done properly. And what this does is it shows, there's three columns there, and for example, I'll pick on the City of St. Louis, we have all the taxing districts listed. Over a five-year period ending in 2018, the City of St. Louis collected $13,450,000. If nothing had been done in Cortex and it had remained the way it was before, which is largely a collection of underutilized warehouses, the amount of money that the city would have collected would have been $4,540,000. That means that over that five-year period, the City of St. Louis had an incremental, we talk about tax increment financing, the city's portion of that after the developer took their TIF portion out was $8,910,000. The schools, which are frequently very concerned about the schools and it is frequently criticized that TIFs undermine the schools, St. Louis City Public Schools during that same five-year period collected $11 million. If nothing had been built new in Cortex, the schools would have collected $4 million. So that's over a $7 million increment that went to the schools. And that is why, that is now, while the TIF is being paid on, after the TIF is paid off, the amount of money going to the public sector is going to be far greater than that. So that gives you an idea of how this is treating the economic viability of the city. The next exhibit, how is that helping, how is that improving the economic well-being of our residents? And it's doing it a number of ways. Over the years through work that our former colleague from the 18th, Alderman Kennedy, and people like our colleague from the 19th have done over the years, working to make sure that when we do these projects in the city, that we are inclusive and that we do all that we can to make sure that those projects benefit all of us. There is a table included in the handout that outlines what the city goals are and how well, how closely Cortex has been in achieving those. While not perfect, I think an examination of those would demonstrate that the Cortex project has been very sensitive to the importance of inclusion. I can't say enough how our colleagues like Alderman Kennedy and Alderwoman Davis have historically been fighting this war for many years, and how they have set at the, you know, at the highest priority this role of creating opportunity. And so much of what we, we hear a lot of discussion now about, you know, affordable housing, which is very, very important, I don't want to ignore that. But when you start taking a look at the metrics, the subsidy for creating a job of opportunity, in other words, the amount that we subsidize jobs versus what we do to subsidize a living unit, there's a huge difference between those two. In other words, the job subsidy is far less typically than what the subsidy is for an affordable housing unit. So when we create opportunity for people, we're actually creating an opportunity for them not to need affordable housing, but for them to actually live in market-rate housing. And we are going to be spending some time looking on some of those trade-offs this next year in the HUDs Committee as we begin addressing affordable housing and homelessness in the city. The CDA is working on an RFP to go out and begin hopefully, thoughtfully examining that. The, the next page on the handout that I've provided talks a little bit about some of the additional inclusion efforts that are occurring in Cortex. I, I think they're fairly significant. We frequently receive criticism in the Central Corridor for the projects that are happening there, and certainly we have benefited a great deal from the support of people from throughout the city, and I can't express my appreciation enough for those who have stayed with us over all these years. I know it's very easy to criticize something that is not particularly in your ward, but I think it's very much in the city's interest that we think of these things together. The, of the 200,000 or so jobs that are in the city, and of course the jobs are where we get so much of our earnings tax, over 50,000 of those jobs are in the 17th Ward, and there's another nearly 100,000 of them in downtown. And so we obviously, you know, are subsidizing or supporting those in our use of tax abatement and TIF. But anytime, I found over my years down here that when you begin creating energy and begin having things happen, all kinds of wonderful things happen, in Cortex that has resulted in Launch Code, for example, being developed. Launch Code is a trading, is a training program that focuses on educating people on how to become coders for computers. Launch Code is located on the north side of Delmar, I believe, in the 18th Ward. More recently, an outgrowth of Cortex has been the MAID project, which is, I believe, in the 26th Ward, again on the north side of Delmar. Very symbolic, those, those locations were selected for, for important symbolic reasons. And I think will be in time to come, an important kind of turning point in our effort to begin mending the Delmar Divide. MAID, for those of you who aren't familiar, is the, is the location of the place where entrepreneurs can go and get trained on 3D printers and a variety of other things. So if you're a back garage, backyard garage inventor type and you want to go ahead and develop a prototype, that's what MAID's all about. You show up there, you pay a fee, and that entitles you to use their equipment. An outgrowth of that is Magic House has come in, and they have formed a facility over there on the second floor of where MAID is. And if you haven't been over there, it's, it's a fascinating facility. It's the, it's an outgrowth of the Magic House, which is out on Lindbergh. They have come to the city and they are now at a location on north of Delmar. That would not have been possible had it not been for Cortex and the philanthropy that has sprung up around some of the activities of Cortex. So I, I just wanted to kind of take a couple minutes to provide that background. I know that it's very easy to focus on the incentives that businesses are getting when we bring them to St. Louis, and it's very easy to go ahead and focus on that. I, I think that's probably the wrong thing to focus on. I think what's more importantly, certainly, that's just the environment, we can't change those rules. What's more important, I think, to focus on is how we win in it, not only economically, but how we win from the standpoint of job creation for our residents. In Cortex today, there is, by the end of this year, there will be 800 jobs that are part of Square. Square didn't exist a few years ago when Cortex was founded. That is a new business for not only the St. Louis, not only for Cortex, but for the entire St. Louis region. New for St. Louis located in Cortex is Microsoft, Accenture, Boeing, A.B. Maury Bakery. There is literally dozens of companies that are, that have never been located in the city. They're suburban companies, or didn't exist before, and that are now in Cortex. So it's very, very easy to go ahead and play politics and kind of focus on what a business is getting out of this. But I think it's very, very important for us to think about the jobs that we're creating for our residents. I think about how hard my wife worked to send our two kids to school, and how one of them is now in Boston and one is in Chicago, and how they may never come back to St. Louis. And as much as my wife may regret that, far worse would be the kids who never had the opportunity and who are here in St. Louis and may not have that opportunity and may not have a job. And so job creation, I think, is a very important component of what we're trying to do down here, along with the ability of providing economic viability for our city. So with that, I'd like to close my remarks and ask for your favorable consideration for this board bill.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we third read and finally pass the aforementioned bill. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Iglesias, Alderman Koltar, Alderwoman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Vollmer, Alderwoman Moran, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderwoman Murphy, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Green, Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderwoman Davis, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Cole, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Navarro, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Moore, Alderman Koltar, Alderwoman Spencer, 25 aye votes and 1 no vote.
By vote, stand the motion, Alderman from the 17th, and third read, and finally pass Board Bill 59 Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 32 Committee Sub as amended sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance authorizing the establishment of the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council through an intergovernmental cooperative agreement by, by and between the city, the Sheriff, the 22nd Judiciary Court, Circuit Attorney, the Missouri State Public Defender, the Director of Missouri Department of Corrections, authorizing the mayor to enter into the intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the respective parties and requiring that the intergovernmental agreement contain certain subjects providing for the filling of vacancies, providing for an executive director and staff to be appointed by the mayor, and resources to be provided by the city, that the executive director and staff shall be members of the city's classified service plan, providing for the severability of the agreement, requiring that the CJCC prepare and provide an annual report to the mayor and to the Board of Alderman containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the 22nd, recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 32 Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill 32 Committee Substitute as amended.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 14th. Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. We spent a lot of time debating this bill last week. This is landmark legislation for the state of Missouri. It really puts the City of St. Louis on the cutting edge of criminal justice reform. It creates a criminal justice coordinating council in which the local, state, and federal government can actually come together in an organized manner and share data and resource to better serve the prison population, to get them in and out as fast as possible, to provide services when needed, to keep them out of the system. It's something that's gone on across the country. Again, it's new to the state of Missouri. I'm proud to be a sponsor, I'm excited for the City of St. Louis. And yes, there are some people who are not all the way in right now, but that's okay. We have enough people that's willing to come together and create this council and make St. Louis a better and safer community.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I ask all my colleagues for their most humble consideration to vote in favor of this bill and put St. Louis on the map with criminal justice reform. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderwoman from the 14th, that we third read and final pass Board Bill 32 Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus.
the executive director and staff shall be members of the city's classified service plan, providing for the severability of the agreement, requiring that the CJCC prepare and provide an annual report to the mayor and to the Board of Alderman containing a severability clause.
Alderman from 22nd, recognized on the third reading, finally passes Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move for third reading and final pass of Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute as amended.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. We spent a lot of time debating this bill last week. This is landmark legislation for the state of Missouri. It really puts the city of St. Louis on the cutting edge of criminal justice reform. It creates a criminal justice coordinating council in which the local, state, and federal government can actually come together in an organized manner and share data and resource to better serve the prison population, to get them in and out as fast as possible, to provide services when needed, to keep them out of the system. It's something that's gone on across the country. Again, it's new to the state of Missouri. I'm proud to be a sponsor. I'm excited for the city of St. Louis. And yes, there are some people who are not all the way in right now, but that's okay. We have enough people that's willing to come together and create this council and make St. Louis a better and safer community.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from 22nd, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I ask all my colleagues for their most humble consideration to vote in favor of this bill and put St. Louis on the map with criminal justice reform. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. It's been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, that we, third reading, finally pass Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Morn. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Moore. I'm sorry. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Rice. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Cole. 26 aye votes.
By vote, stand motion, Alderman from the 22nd and third read, and finally pass Board Bill Number 32, Committee Substitute as amended.
That is the extent of third reading report of engrossment.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bill 48, 58, 76, 80 as amended, 56, 57, 60, 82, 83, 67, 79 as amended, 68, 54, 61, 70, 55, 66, 72, 59 Committee Sub, 71 and 32 Committee Sub as amended.
All other business been suspended. The president shall an open session and fix this signature heretofore to then that these may become law. Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize on the courtesy resolutions calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President and Members of the Board. I ask us to adopt our courtesy resolution calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 19th, seconded by Alderman from the 13th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 98, sponsored by Alderman Cole. Pursuant to ordinance 64994, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee approved the budget for the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvements Account.
Alderman from the 25th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 98.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would actually like to refer Resolution 98, Resolution 99, and Resolution 100 to the Parks Committee.
All right. We have to do them.
So I'd like to move Resolution Number 98 to the Parks Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th, and taken second on the motion, seconded by Alderman from the 22nd, that we refer Resolution 98 to the Parks Committee. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 98 to Parks.
So noted. Resolution 99, sponsored by Alderman Cole. Pursuant to ordinance 69372, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee approved the budget for the Neighborhood Parks Capital Improvement Account Funds for the fiscal year 2020 regarding the proceeds of the 3.16 cent tax.
Alderman from the 25th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 99.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is really where the big money comes into play. I'd like to move Resolution Number 99 to the Parks Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th, seconded by Alderman from the 12th. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 99 to Parks.
You like funding.
So noted. Resolution 100, sponsored by Alderman Cole. Pursuant to ordinance 67477, the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee approved the budget for the Neighborhood Park Fund Annual Budget.
Alderman from the 25th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 100.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move Resolution Number 100 to the Parks Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 25th, and taken second by Alderman from the 12th, that we sign Resolution 100 to the Parks Committee. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 100 to Parks.
So noted. That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading of resolution.
Resolution 92, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro. The Board of Alderman approved the mayor's appointment for Mr. Jake Banton of Forest Park Advisory as an at-large member to serve in accordance with the provisions of the city of St. Louis, ordinance 63769.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution Number 92.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 92.
Moved by Alderman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 25th, you recognize to close. I mean, 28th, you recognize to close.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
All right. Alderman from the 25th? I don't think. You were trying to get to the mic.
I was.
Okay. It's been moved by Alderman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Resolution 93, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro. The Board of Alderman approved the mayor's appointment of Ms. Lita Price Land to the Forest Park Advisory as an at-large member to serve in accordance with the provisions of the city of St. Louis, ordinance 63769.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the second reading of Resolution 93.
Thank you. I move that we adopt Resolution Number 93.
Moved by Alderman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? Alderman from the 28th, you recognize to close.
Thank you. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 28th, seconded by Alderman from the 25th, that we second read and adopt Resolution 93. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
That is the extent of second reading of resolutions.
Miss Lane has unfinished business. Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the closed session. Motion.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that we go into closed session per section 610.021, paragraph 3 of Missouri Code.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, seconded by Alderman from the 14th, that we go on the closed session. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Iglesias. Alderman Coulter. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Vommer. Alderwoman Morn. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacoro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Cole. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. 24 aye votes and one no vote.
By vote, stand motion, Alderman from the 22nd. We are now going into closed session. I'll ask all the cameras to be turned off, and I ask the marshals if they can clear the galleries of everybody in the galleries, if they can clear the galleries and keep the doors closed. So everybody in the galleries has to exit at this point. And all media and everybody, if you all would exit, that'd be great. And then Alderman from the 23rd, can you check, make sure City TV has done their thing? Board will now come to order. We're back from closed session. We've completed Miss Lane's unfinished business announcements. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know we had a moment of silence for Mary Ellen Ponder's mother, Mary Jo Ponder, earlier this morning, but I did want to make sure that I provided information for the visitation and services. Visitation will be this Sunday, July 14th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Hofmeister Colonial Mortuary at 6464 Chippewa Street in the lovely 16th Ward, AMAS. And Christian burial service will be celebrated on Monday, July 15th, at 11:00 a.m. at St. Simon, the Apostle Catholic Church, as well. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
We have no meetings, and we will go back in session on September the 13th.
Mr.?
Alderman from the 13th.
Members of the Board, I said, the Alderwoman from the 11th Ward and myself would like to invite everybody to Conale Park this evening for a movie night. We're featuring Meet Me in St. Louis, and there will be food trucks and some beverages available. The movie will start probably around 8:30 or so, but you come anytime you'd like. It's by the boathouse. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, no, the dead fish are in the other lake.
Dead fish?
The dead fish are in the other lake, Alderwoman. Not in boat lake. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 25th, you have something else?
I do have something else, but I mean, oh, okay. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention, and my neighbors would be very upset with me if I didn't follow up on this, but next week, next Wednesday, July 17th, we're having the first dive-in movie at Marquette Park. So it's being hosted by the Downtown Dutch Town Business Association and other partners in the Dutch Town neighborhood, but it's going to be, again, July 17th, next Wednesday, at 7:00 p.m. in Marquette Park, home to one of the nation's only free public pools. For those of you that don't know, the city of St. Louis provides free public pools to our residents. We're one of the few major cities in the entire country that does so. So it's a wonderful community asset for our neighbors in Dutch Town, but we welcome everyone from around the city to participate. And again, that's next Wednesday, July 17th, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. The movie that they'll be watching in the park is featuring Tom Hanks. It's the movie Splash.
Excellent. Alderman from the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we leave for this last session for the Board of Alderman, please, I'm asking, I'm really pleading, that everybody that has children and grandchildren, please hold your kids close to you. Suicide is real in our community, and people think it only happens to others, and it doesn't. But when you get a call of a 14-year-old that hung their cell, it makes you think, what is so bad that they don't want to be on this earth anymore? And so, please, I'm pleading, if you have kids, if you have grandkids, reach out to them, let them know that you love them, and there's nothing that bad where you cannot go on for another day. We hear a lot of violence in our community in regards to kids being shot, but people don't understand, the kids that are seeing that, it's impacting them also. And so just what people deal with in wars, and they come back and their minds are messed up, that's what our kids are dealing with on an everyday thing. So when you have kids that's in your family, and you have grandchildren, just reach out and just tell them you love them. Hug them real tight, because tomorrow is not promised to anyone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the 14th.
I thank you, Alderman Boyd. I really respect that stance, and I think that we all need to be aware of all the things that go on with our children and to hold them close. That said, I'd like to make an announcement that Christie Park Concert will take place on Tuesday, June 16th, 6:30, at Christie Park. Band that will be performing is Presentations. Come on down, enjoy a free concert in the cool Christie Park behind the firehouse. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 12th?
Alderwoman from the 28th? Thank you. Continuing with the free outdoor movie theme, tonight in Forest Park on Art Hill, they will be showing Black Panther, starting tonight, so at 6:00 p.m. So in Forest Park, everyone's welcome to come out if you're not able to make it to some of the other ones. So lots of wonderful things to do this weekend. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 19th?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. This weekend, in Jeff Van Leeu neighborhood, we're having a neighborhood health care block party at Ms. Tilly's Corner. Many of you have been there, understand the mission there, and we are starting that at 1:00. It's from 1:00 to 3:00. Everything is free. We'll be giving our gift cards for gasoline and groceries, and every organization you can think of that will assist with resources will be there. And we're also going to be talking about having more block units. And we have Bobby Nofer is going to be there to speak, and there'll be a lot of spoken word.[1800.63] And, uh, we have Bobby Nofer, he's going to be there to speak, and there'll be a lot of spoken word and music performed. So hopefully you'll have a chance to come out and most especially, uh, bring your children so that they can have some additional resources and outlets other than, uh, destructive behavior, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, just be, since we're going to be out until September, I want to keep on everyone's radars, the Festival of Nations from the International Institute, um, will be the weekend of August twenty, twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, that Saturday and Sunday, in Tower Grove Park. Um, it's an incredible opportunity to see all of the diversity, uh, from nations around the world that is represented here in the St. Louis area. Um, please, uh, be prepared to park far away and walk on in and be nice and sweaty and eat lots of delicious food and see, um, all sorts of amazing culture there. Um, and then also, we have some South Grand movie nights that will be happening, uh, throughout the summer, um, down at Ritz Park on South Grand, so, um, lots of things to do down in the Tower Grove area and we'd love to have you throughout the summer, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the third.
Yep, I'm going to continue the movie night thing also. In Hyde Park, we'll be having a movie night tonight, uh, we'll be watching, uh, Zootopia. And, uh, we'll have, uh, bounce houses, free popcorn and free snow cones. Uh, so if you get a chance, you can come on out, uh, tonight, looks like we are starting at, uh, six-thirty, uh, until the end of the movie. Uh, also I want to add that, um, you know, two do, two days ago, we had another sixteen-year-old shot in this city outside past curfew. People are continuing dying in this city that are, the youth that we are so adamant about growing up, we put millions of dollars in the resources for these children, but yet, we're not doing anything collectively to ensure that they can indulge in the resources that we are pumping money into. They have to stay alive for them to be able, um, to at least get to a particular point where we can start ensuring that families understand that these resources are available. Sometimes that takes us getting uncomfortable in this city, and I want to add this because it has to be talked about, sometimes we don't want to have the hard discussions, but it's important. You know, when you look at the statistics in this city, there has not been one person that is not from African, not an African Ameri, African, African American descent, that has been a minor who has been murdered this year, not one. So when we talk about what's important for the city, we have to talk about the issues that exist from one side of town that is now being prevalent all across the entire city. And if we do what we need to do, when we are standing up telling you what it is that we need to control our kids, I think it's important for everybody to open up their ears and really listen to what it is that we're saying, um, collectively. I don't see many people out here at these murder scenes when these kids are getting killed, and that's no disrespect to any of the Alder persons here, but when you out here in these streets and you get an understanding after talking to these kids who are watching their friends be murdered on while they're being murdered, then you get a different idea of what's going on in the city and what it's going to take to make the particular changes that we all want to see change. This year, we will probably once again be number one in homicides per capita in the United States. Most likely. And I don't think we've created any laws specifically this year that's going to change that for this year, yes, maybe for the next year or the year afterwards. Yes, we can have long-term solutions, but in the meantime, we have to have short-term solutions at the same time. You know, we have to hit this from every single angle. I'm not trying to encourage you necessarily to vote for curfew because that's not the only thing that's going to make a particular change. But we do have to start looking at what tools are not in the toolbox that these police officers have and what we're not utilizing as a tool within the city to give to the community, so we ourselves can start doing what's necessary to ensure that the changes are happening on our levels. So as we go out of session this summer, you will see more deaths, you will see more kids being shot, underage, fifteen, sixteen, fourteen, thirteen, we got three-year-olds and four-year-olds getting murdered in these streets right now, murdered. And not once have every single person in this Board of Aldermen stood up and said something about it, we all need to be addressing this, because that's a stain on the entire city of St. Louis, it's not just the third ward, the twenty-first ward, it's not just the north side. People don't look at the city as being broken up from the north to south if you don't live in this city, they say St. Louis is terrible. They say St. Louis is out of control, they don't care about the Central West End, they don't care about nothing else, they care about the city as a whole. And when people are coming from Chesterfield, they have to, should have to make their way down the highway, our highways are dangerous. They have to make their way into the city then get to downtown where they believe is safe, just so they can stay safe. We got people's cars being broken into downtown, at what point in time do you think those car break-ins going to get more dangerous, it's not just going to be them breaking into your cars, you're going to get robbed at gunpoint. Things will change in this city if we do not put a stop to the way that things are happening right now, things are happening this way because we allow them to be this way, it's not just based on police, it's not just based on the circuit of turn, you can't just point the finger at one individual or two individuals, it's on every single one of us. And if we continue in the manner that we are by playing it safe, because that's what we doing, we play it safe sometimes, we play it safe a lot in this board, we can't continue to play it safe because the city ain't playing safe. So I encourage every single one of you all, if you don't agree with curfew, bring something to the table that you do agree with, if you feel like it needs to be curfew-centered at it, then think about that while we're out of session, think about what it is that you think needs to be implemented within this city so we can see a realistic change. So this time next year, we're not talking about the exact same things and spending the same time on things, um, that we should be making sure we are being preventative on, so once again, I appreciate everybody, but remember, these kids are dying, and they're getting younger and younger and it's becoming something that is more and more acceptable, because we're not riding for that. We're not out here in trolls going crazy trying to figure out who killed these kids. And that's something that needs to be happening, we should be spending and exhausting all of our resources to keep the residents in the city safe and wipe that stain away that you can't come here, live here and grow up your children within this city, that's a stain on all of us and we all have to work to change that. And sometimes that takes getting extremely uncomfortable, and you might have to make some uncomfortable decisions. Everything that we do in this board, as you know, is not always going to be right, sometimes we going to make mistakes, but it's up to us to come back and at least be forthcoming enough to make that mistake, at least, at least be, uh, courageous enough to make the mistake.
Alderman?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you have an announcement?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed.
I just, uh, wanted to announce for those who don't know, that, uh, Dr. Dwan Warmack will be leaving Harris Stowe, uh, in thirty days, and we want to thank him for his service. Uh, we want to also thank him for his creative, uh, way of getting business done. He formed a lot of partnerships that have supported us, and, uh, he will be here for another thirty days, so if you have a chance, send him a note, uh, and or stop by, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board, I'd like to announce that, uh, we will be having a twenty-second ward family reunion or picnic in Bear Brothers Park, the last Saturday in July, July twenty-seventh, from eleven to three PM. So everybody's invited, if you live there, if you just love us because we live there, come out and have a good time on July twenty-seventh at Bear Brothers Park from eleven to three PM.
Alright, thank you, Alderman. Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move to excuse the following Alderman due to necessary absence, there will be the Alderman woman from the first, the Alderman from the fourth and the Alderwoman from the twentieth.
And to the second on that motion, second about Alderman from the sixth, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. As an Alderman, your work is never done and you will never have enough time to address all the issues within your community. So a summer break or a time off for most people and most professions mean exactly that. A summer break for you just means that you have, you know, this Friday morning to, uh, address more constituent issues. So, you know, I, I'm proud of the work that each and every one of you do, keep doing it, uh, and, um, try to find some time before we come back to spend with your families and your friends. I know it's tough, but try to carve out a few minutes to do that, enjoy your summer. Uh, Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, Members of the Board, um, I, I don't think we really need a summer break, but, you know, I can only speak for myself, right?
You're not going to get a break, trust me.
Right, amen, people need to understand that, even though we're going to be on recess, that does not mean we're out of work.
That just means Friday mornings you don't have meetings.
We're going to have even more stuff to do in our communities to even give better service, so with that, Mr. President, I move to adjourn until September thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Stand the drunk.